From Drew.
I think it's on my.
Okay, alright, good evening, we'll call this meeting to order, this is the Charlton zoning board of appeals Tuesday, April 30th, 2024. Uh, new business, we have.
Sorry.
That's okay, take your time.
One more time?
Alright, should I start from the top?
Take two.
Alright, alright, we will again call this meeting to order, this is Charlton zoning board of appeals Tuesday, April 30th, 2024. Uh, first item for new business, Melissa Miller, sixty-nine Glen Echo Shore Road. Why don't you come on forward and sit at the table up here? Alright, if you would just start off, state your name and who you are and what you guys are here for.
I'm Melissa Miller and we're here for. Variants and know a little about it.
I'm George Batsakis, I'm her husband.
Okay.
So, I'm running point, I'm the one that knows everything.
Alright, that's perfectly fine, why don't you start off and uh, tell us what we're requesting a variance for.
Um, so we have to replace the rear foundation wall, it's crumbling in, and in order to do so, we have to do some excavation and demoing of the deck and destruction of a, an existing patio. And the end result, we would like to bring back the natural swell of the backyard as it was prior to the backfilling, which was prior owners had backfilled and put a pool in the backyard. So we're not gonna bring it back to what it naturally was, but I don't wanna lose the sitting space that the patio created. So what we'd like to do is get a variance on the um, setback for the side yard, so that when the, the, when we build the new deck, we can extend it to the edge of the property line there, as opposed to where it is now, and then step down to the patio. I don't wanna put another patio in, I'd rather just use the deck, cause the patio's gonna require us to backfill, and I don't wanna backfill.
Okay. Do you have any um, drawings of this?
Yeah, they should have the site plans and.
It's underneath the uh, yellow sheet. Okay. So it looks like you're, you wanna extend to the northerly side yard?
Yeah.
Pretty much right up to the line. How far is the house from the?
About s- uh, like, less than ten feet.
Okay.
I believe it was, it might, it had to have been built, because I think the current setback's fifteen feet, and we don't have nearly fifteen feet on either side of the house, so.
Okay. Um, any questions after that? From anybody?
No, it's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to hear Kurt, how does it say about it?
Is there a reason you're bringing it all the way up to the edge, is it just to get additional space? It seems like point eight feet to the property line is very, very close.
So our, the, the property next to us is just basically like an easement um, that a lot, like the, the house behind us on Park owns a camp um, to the north of our property line, and then they have a camp across the street that goes to the lake. So there's really, there's nothing there for them, they can't build on it, it's just a vacant spot of land.
Okay.
We, right now, the way the patio is set up, it's just a nice area to sit, and from the patio, we have a view of the lake, and I would just like to keep that. Um, you know Kurt had advised I could, we could rebuild what's exist, what's existing, however, the, the, the way it's currently built, you know, we have a retaining wall that goes up about eight feet to hold that patio up. And the issue with the foundation wall essentially was created because previous owners backfilled, and they didn't do a proper job, the, I, I don't think that wall was ever meant to be a supporting wall and a retaining wall. Um, so over the years with water, erosion, et cetera, it's pushed that concrete and it's failing and coming inward. Um, so I wanna get everything as far off, as much off the house as I can. But I also don't wanna lose, it's like an extra, you know, it's about a hundred square feet, cause it's about a ten by ten, you know, area where the patio is.
Where's the patio on this map?
I, I thought I had the original thing in my, so the patio would be, I have my sketches. Oh, thank you so much. So, the, the current deck right now is a ten by ten foot deck that ends at the edge of the house on the north side. And then there's one step that goes down, and there's basically the remaining area from where the edge of the house and the deck end, all the way to the property line is a patio. And on the east side, there's um, you know landscaping block retaining wall that wraps around and keeps that patio up. So when we come in and excavate, all of that's gonna get pulled out so that they can have access, and we're gonna have to rebuild. So that's, basically, I just wanna repurpose the patio, but just make it decked, so I don't have to backfill. I'd rather just sink some footings in and let the ground just naturally swell. And if you notice on the site plans for the foundation wall, we're gonna, we're adding a little bit of a wing wall just to help with some of the support, but I don't want that wing wall to be eight feet tall. It's just, you know, whatever we have to have in order to create a more natural um, you know, a natural kinda swing around the, both sides of the house.
So the patio's going away and you're going over that with the deck?
Y- yeah.
Okay.
Is there a grade on this uh, like is the lot sloped, one way or the other?
It. They filled it like ten feet, I think, and they put an in-ground pool in, but this was way before I bought the house, and then they.
The next owners collapsed the pool.
No, I think it was those owners collapsed the pool, but I don't think they did it properly. So the drainage and the years and there's so much concrete under there, it's just like pushing. So I wanna, we wanna bring the yard back down, cause it's a split, so the back shouldn't have been that covered with, it shouldn't have been that underground.
Yeah, origi- there's a back door, I think, Kurt, did you get some pictures of the back of the house? Yeah, so I think, I think, or, cause there's also windows that have been, one window was.
Cemented over.
Cemented over, and then another window where the bathroom is, there's like one of those half barrels, you know, that holds the dirt from it. So I think originally, it was a walkout to the backyard and the natural grade went up to Park and just kinda followed up all the way um, you know, to Osgood, as, as far as we go. And then, you know, as she mentioned, they backfilled everything. But then when they filled the pool in, again, I don't think that was done properly. Um, and the pressure, water, we get a lot, a lot of standing water gets stuck behind our house, cause there's no proper drainage. So my, you know, the priority, pri- the priority is obviously repair the wall, that's gonna get knocked down and repoured. Um, and then the secondary is drainage, we wanna create, you know, a good amount of drainage, so we don't ever have this problem again moving forward. Um, the deck was just, you know, that's part of it, and um, you know, if we can salvage that areas, that sitting area, we would, we would just like to salvage it.
Okay.
Should we find out more about the drainage and where it's going, or plan to be going?
Do you wanna ask?
Well, is that part of this, or does it matter?
Um, I mean, the, the issue in front of us is the, the deck, building the deck into the setback, so I think we should probably.
Yeah, there would be, I, I, I mean, ultimately, there would be no cha- there's no change to the, what should be the proper drainage. Like the, the, the way that we're, we're bringing it back to the way it should have been done from the start. So whatever new drainage we're creating is what I s- I assume should have been when they had originally built it. Cause the water should come down and flow around the house and, you know, continue off into the lake um, as it would naturally go down the hill. The problem is, is we have whatever's buried underground, all of this unnecessary concrete that was built around the pool um, that basically creates barriers, stoppages, there's a lot of gaps in there that are getting filled, and it takes that much longer. So the water drains eventually, but it pools up in our backyard and then just takes uh, too much time, which causes undue moisture on our house. It create like, you know, the underside of the deck that's there right now is rotting um, from moisture. The, even the retaining wall um, and the existing concrete that's in there is just starting to crack and fall apart, deteriorate. Um, you know, at least in, in my view, from an environmental standpoint, what we're doing is going to improve the landscape and the surrounding area, simply because we're gonna bring it back to a natural state, or as natural as we can.
Okay, any more questions? Alright, should we call any other boards or abutters, any other local officials that wanna speak?
Kurt Meskis, building inspector, zoning enforcement officer, if I may?
Please.
So the subject property is sixty-nine Glen Echo Shore Road, is shown on the locust map on the first page. Of course, we have to caution you always that this is a flyover with assessors' maps overlaid on it. They're not accurate for boundary lines and stuff, but it does give us an idea. Page two shows the front of sixty-nine Glen Echo and the right-hand side of sixty-nine Glen Echo. The dark spot in the upper right-hand corner of the house is the um, the area that's subject to it. And as I heard the applicant speak, it does make sense that this probably was some sort of raised ranch um, that had a four-foot concrete wall in the back with a, or an eight-foot wall in the back. And it does have a door that comes out of the basement that comes up through a hole, so.
Hmm.
Um, looking at the next page, the rear of the house, um, you can see the existing deck, the fence, I do know from experience way back in two thousand and three, I had dealings with this property, there was a pool there, sometime along the way it got filled in. And that area, as the applicant has described, generally slopes from Park Road above, which we're looking at the back of six, uh, ninety-six Park behind them, all the way down to the lake. And then the house to the right of the backyard, there is a hundred party, there again, you can see that it slopes down to the way it's now. Water runs downhill, um, you know, uh, it does rain here in Massachusetts, I heard, and, and water doesn't go some, somewhere, the applicant's um, neighbor um, in the rear, as you can see on the, on the locust, owns the property adjacent to him, but it is a single lot. They would never be able to build another house on that lot, cause it's undersized. And any water that's hitting his backyard now is going off to that lot. It's just the, the condition of the soil and whatever they did in there. When they got rid of the swimming pool, I do not have the permit for removal of the swimming pool, but that happens. People say, oh, done, fill the pool in, we never know until something like this comes along and.
True.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you Kurt. Yeah, that one.
Keep that.
Oh, that was super good, thanks.
So, how far from the edge of the house is this plan showing your deck?
Um, so I, the, the plans I drew, or I had them drew, I had them draw it, I think like, it's like two and a half, three inches off the edge. We're willing to work with whatever we're, whatever you're willing to, to allow us to work with. So, you know, whatever, whatever you guys stamp, I'll, I'll uh, you know, we'll build accordingly. Um, ideally, I'd like to, cause what I would like to do is I'd like to build the deck right to the edge, and then where the deck ends, we'll, we'll, we're gonna be ripping out the old fence and everything, we'll be putting a new fence in. So it's just kinda seamless, you know, it goes from deck to yard, from that edge of the property over to where we, you know, where we're gonna end the deck on the other side.
Yep.
Um, you know, if it needs to be five inches, ten inches, whatever, as much as we can get, we'd like to do.
Yep, okay.
It looks like it's pretty close, with seven feet on the south side, it looks like it's probably similar.
Probably about seven feet, yeah.
The north.
And Ru- Rushton, Cheryl, um, they're the property owners behind us on Park. Um, you know, they're, they're, they're not here, so I don't think they have a problem with it. But we're gonna be working with them too, to kind of make sure that their area and our area kinda goes seamless. We've got a, you know, a little down-the-road garden project, we'd love to do, you know, a kind of a co-op together. So they're fully aware of what we're doing and how far we'd like to bring the deck over. Um, you know, so we're not really, we're not intruding on anything that they would do and would certainly abide by any uh, um, you know, the markers that are, you know, across our property land. Cause I believe what Kurt was bringing up from that fence was there, some prior owners had some issues with the fence. I think that there was a, some back and forth for a while. So, you know, again, we had it re um, um, you know, the engineers came out, yeah, they, it was surveyed. So we'll obviously create the boundaries with the new fences that we're gonna put in, in accordance to the surveyor um, laws that they done, which I think will, uh, you know, again, I think it's just gonna be, overall, it's gonna be better than it was.
So the new fence, you don't have a plan yet for where that's gonna go?
It's just, it's gonna run along the property line. Um, I haven't looked in, at the, I haven't checked the, you know, the survey, like I haven't processed the, what's existing there with the survey, with what the surveyor came back with, cause it's all getting ripped up. So once it all gets ripped up, then we're, you know, we're back to ground zero and they'll be going by whatever the surveyor plots are to put whatever we need to put down on. Um, the same contractor that I'm working with for everything will be um, will be doing all of this. He's local, he actually lives on the other side of the lake, I'm pretty sure Kurt works with him a lot, Mark Davis, he's the one helping me with all of this.
Okay. Any more questions?
No.
Alright, do you guys wanna close the public portion and discuss it?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Okay. So, I mean, I don't particularly like the idea of going all the way to the property line, but, I mean, I, I understand you have um, you know, agreement with your, with your neighbors there, but as always, things can change, people can change and move and stuff like that, so. I mean, I, I'd like to see at least a foot, maybe more like two feet uh, from the lot line for you as far as how far we can give you a variance to build to, so what do you guys think? You have any thoughts about one way or the other?
It's challenging, I think that, uh, you know, if you were to put the patio back, you'd be able to put the patio back exactly as it is now. So, the challenge here is you've gotta clear out that soil, and in doing so, either he puts the soil back and he runs into the same problem later on down the road, or he keeps, leaves the soil out, puts a deck over it. But as soon as he does that, then now he's gotta pull it back from where the patio had extended to previously.
Yeah.
Just the fact that the fence is there, it's kinda. Mitigates the purpose of putting it two feet back.
Yeah.
Selfie.
I mean, so maybe a foot. I mean, I was thinking two feet, but with the fence there, it's.
Yeah, it's a good point.
It's less of an issue.
Yeah, it's right on the line anyway. Uh, is there anything on the other side of the house? I don't see anything on the, on the lot here, but is it pretty much clear from front yard to backyard on the opposite side of the house from where you're building?
So the opposite side has an even s- kind of a smaller setback from, or you know, setback on the side. And if you, there's, actually, if you look at um, on that second page there, where you can see the driveway, the edge of the driveway goes to the edge of the property line, and then you can see like the top of the recycle bin at the edge of the house. There's like, maybe like a three, three and a half foot retaining wall there, a concrete path that leads back, that dark spot that you see right past the um, exhaust for the boiler is a s- concrete set of stairs that goes up to a whole mess of concrete that was surrounding the pool.
Okay.
So the plan is um, and I have permission too, from this, this lot here where the grass is, uh, Kathy, um, she's giving me permission to enter in through there with the excavator.
Yep.
Then we're gonna rip all that concrete out, run all like, get rid of that fence, all that concrete's gonna come out. And again, same thing, natural, we wanna get it as natural as possible with as little, you know, having to restr- rebuild retaining walls as little as possible. Um, that, that's the, that's the goal, but other than that, there's nothing there, there's just concrete, just a mess of old, cracked, broken concrete slabs.
So are you going both sides of the house to both property lines, is that what you're looking for? No, with the retaining wall.
Well, right now, the plan, we only really need a wing wall on, oh, actually, no, yes, the engineers did do a wing wall on both sides. Cause they do, they did, they did determine that once, that there will be a necessity for a wing wall on that side. We just won't be able to determine how tall it will be until they get in there and start pulling everything out. But if you look at the plans, you'll see that there's a wing wall on either side.
Yeah.
But there's an existing retaining wall.
Yeah, so the retaining wall starts, I, I mean, it's like in sections, like three and a half feet of wall are built, is built at the front of the house. And then there's like, like I said, a concrete walkway that goes up in grade, and then there's about a five steps with a wall right there that goes up into the backyard.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Meskis?
Yes, sir.
Are we doing a variance for the retaining wall, or is that replace, is that like replaced, uh, you know, existing footprint? I mean, if he's already got retaining walls on both sides?
Right, so what did I say? Yeah, my word.
Yeah, retaining walls have zero foot setback.
Kurt had originally re- um, advised me to do two separate permits, I don't know if you recall our conversation about that. He would, or he was initially going to approve my plans to do the retain, to do the concrete, all the concrete, the wall, whatever. He was good to go on that. But I wanted to add the deck into the project, just so that I'm not, I don't have, I don't, I'm not, I'm doing it all at once.
Yeah.
And because we were on a timeline where I was getting this all prepared over the winter, I can't really break ground until, you know, the, the spring, until it dries up a little bit. Um, it just made more sense for us logistics-wise to put everything at once.
Yep.
Uh, but initially, had we just gone with the permit for the concrete work and the retaining walls, he was going to approve that and then advise me to go in with a separate permit for the deck and apply for the variance for the deck. I, I'd prefer to do it this way, which, you know, he advised that it was gonna be a little bit more of a pain, cause he would have to deny the whole thing, but it just made more sense for me, just for the work.
So I say the applicant must obtain and submit the proper paperwork showing a hardship in or the change, alteration, extension is no more detrimental to the neighborhood. So I'm, and, and often, you know, this gets balled up in, well, a little bit here and a little bit there. And when we air this in a public forum like this, then the neighborhood gets to come and say it, their concerns.
Yep.
And I'm not making a decision in, in the confines of my office that people may be upset with.
Yep.
So, you know, I, I would say that, yes, we're having a change, alteration, extension. I mean, we're changing the grade of the land, we're changing, that there's a deck there, that's, you know, a patio there, that's gonna be a deck, you know?
Yep.
I would just sort of wrap it into a special permit, that there's no, it's not any more detrimental to the neighborhood. If you guys find it, that's true.
Hmm.
And that just solidify the variance part of it by saying that, you know, the setbacks are fine.
Yeah.
Whatever, whatever number setback is the applicant says, you know, if you think two feet's the right number. But as, as been discussed is, is that if they did a one-for-one replacement, we don't even have to be here.
Yeah. Yep, understood.
Thank you.
The other question is, is it close enough, we wanna as-built afterwards, if we do something, or is it overkill for a deck?
Yeah, I mean, with the retaining walls and excavation, I mean, I think it makes sense, but.
Alright.
Alright, so what do we think, like a foot, or?
I think that should be, they, I think the fence is there, that's where it goes to. And if the fence is on the property line, then why not let that be the, how far they can go up to it? So then, they're asking for his zero-foot setback.
Yeah, for the retaining wall. It was zero point eight.
No, no, that's, that's for the uh.
No, the deck was zero point eight.
Proposed. Oh, zero point eight, okay, good.
Yeah, I had given, um, excuse me, I had left some space, cause I assumed that the footings that need to go in would be wider than the posts at the corner of the deck, right? So I was leaving that extra space.
Yeah.
For whatever footings end up in the ground, the edge of the footings can go to the property line, but then the post is gonna come in, you know, however many inches from in from that. So that's why I had left that space in the corner there.
Okay.
Just to, just for whatever's underground, I didn't wanna, I don't, obviously don't wanna be sinking footings that expand into their property under the ground, under the surface.
Hmm, makes sense. Well, you can say zero for the retaining wall, and I would round it off for a foot for the deck, but what do you guys think?
I think that sounds appropriate.
Okay.
Yeah, sure.
Alright, somebody wanna make a motion?
Alright, so the motion, as we have it, so now, now, before I make that, we're talking about the setback, so we're providing a variance, so the variance is fifteen feet.
Yeah, it'd be fifteen feet for the retaining wall, yeah, fourteen for the, for the deck, of relief.
Wow, fourteen of relief, okay. Alright. So I make a motion. To accept, well, no, it's not to accept, well, yeah, to accept it as written uh, for the deck with a fifteen-foot variance for the retaining wall and a fourteen-foot variance for the deck.
What's the hardship?
And the hardship being, um. Wow, there's, there's a lot, so.
You know, the.
The hardship would be the grade, uh, yeah, the irrigation and.
Size, shape, topography.
Yeah, size, shape, and uh, top- topography, which we have to deal with.
Um, so we wanna specify fifteen feet from the side yard, northerly side yard setback, and the southerly for the retaining wall, and then uh, fourteen feet relief for the deck on the northerly side yard setback.
Oh, so it's for, if you ask, we'd have to do it for both?
Yeah.
Okay.
For the retaining.
Yeah, cause the retaining wall is gonna be, so it's gonna be a fifteen-foot, I have to write this all down. It's gonna be a fifteen-foot uh, variance for the retaining wall in north and the south side of the property, a fourteen-foot variance for the deck on the north side of the property.
And did you wanna throw in the as-built requirements, or?
So, and now, it's, so it's a deck, so when we're putting in the as-built for, for, just for the deck.
Well, they both.
The deck and the retaining walls, I mean, he said he doesn't know how tall they're gonna be, so, but just to verify. The deck and the retaining walls, I mean, he said he doesn't know how tall they're gonna be, so, but just to verify that they're built to the edges and that the decks.
Okay, yeah, no, I guess that makes sense, so then, as, as built. Alright, did I miss anything?
Oh, somebody want a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright.
Thank you.
Motion passed.
One quick question, when you did, you said fifteen and four, like, does it matter that we don't have that much space back there, is that just how you have to write it out?
Yeah, that's just the amount of relief, so you're required to have fifteen feet, so when we grant you the variance.
Oh, you're giving us fourteen feet of rel- I see, okay.
Fourteen feet off.
So it's, it's on the, on the other side, I got you, I got you, thank you.
Yeah, um. Mary, do you wanna give them the recording?
Okay, so well, you'll, you'll notify me. Perfect, thank you so much, guys, appreciate it, thank you, Kurt.
Good night.
Have a good night.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Melissa Avidian, zero Old Worcester Road. Alright, if you could uh state your name for the record and who you are and what brings you here tonight.
I'm Blaze Bertham, I'm a lawyer from North Brookfield, and I'm representing Melissa Avidian.
Okay.
And I'm Jason DuBois, DC Engineering and Survey from Charlton.
Okay, are you the contractor or?
Uh, the engineer.
Okay, gotcha, thank you.
And I'm Melissa Avidian, the owner of the land.
Okay, good evening.
This is a petition for a variance, uh seeking to allow destruction of a single family home on a substandard lot. Um, it's a lot that has a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage, so it's lacking in the frontage requirement by fifty feet. It does have uh in excess of the minimum square footage required and it can meet setback, side yard and uh real lot dimensions, so the only issue is whether or not uh it would be a hardship since it doesn't have adequate frontage. We recognize that this lot had merged with the abutting lot, and there's no question about that in our mind, so we're not seeking any I guess I said, can't use the word grandfather anymore, the appeals court says non-conforming lot, we can't raise that as an issue, we, we understand that. The merger was somewhat inadvertent, um you might suggest that it was a self-created hardship. Uh it really wasn't created by Melissa, she at one time owned the abutting lot that has a house on it that she lived in. And the lot that's in question now, and combined, they had uh two hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage. And she mortgaged the house lot. The mortgagee's lawyer, the lender's lawyer apparently didn't review zoning, and that's not uncommon, title examiner just don't u- usually disclaim a zoning search. And he just took a mortgage on the house lot, which had a hundred feet of frontage, and then they foreclosed. And that foreclosure in and of itself really created probably an illegal lot, arguably, and I shouldn't, nothing that I really don't wanna go there, but the reality is that when the lender took the mortgage, he should've taken it on both lots, and he didn't. So when the mortgagee foreclosed, he ended up with a lot with a hundred feet of frontage. And he left a hundred and twenty-five feet of frontage next to it, which really is a dead lot, so again, we're not looking for any sort of protection under forty-eight six, paragraph one or paragraph four, we know we don't have that. But we also have a lot that's completely valueless, that does have adequate square footage, that can meet the setback, side yard and red yard requirements. But we can't do anything with it, and that's really what the hardship is now. If we had a forty-eight six, one first paragraph argument, I'd say, well, can't, it's not detrimental to the area because the four lots after that are all developed with houses, and they all have less frontage with this than this one. So this lot actually has more frontage than the next four contiguous lots that are all developed. But unfortunately, the zoning bylaw was amended and this lot merged. And then through inadvertence on Melissa's part, was foreclosed upon, and she's now left with a lot that looks like a duck and walks like a duck, but it isn't a duck, we can't build on it without a variance, and so that really is the hardship, she's got a lot that if she can't build on it, and a building would be consistent with the rest of the area, um she's got a hardship. The lot's worthless, it's probably gonna be taken by the town for non-payment of taxes, because there's no reason for her to continue to pay taxes on it, she can't do anything with it. But on the other hand, it could be built upon, consistent in size, again, with more frontage than the abutting lot, and I think in the four contiguous lots, so that's really what we're, what we're saying, it's, it's not like we're saying we have a uh as a matter of right, because we know we don't, we know they merged, but inadvertently, we now have a lot that's that should qualify, but doesn't.
But doesn't.
And that's the hardship. You wanna add anything to that, Jason?
No, I think that explains it all. I did add on the, on the site plan, you can see the uh lot locus. So I, I have a kind of a leader going to the subject parcel, and then you can see the lots to the right, those are the lots that have uh actual less frontage than the proposed lot.
And all four of those lots have houses on them?
Yes.
Okay, uh do we know when this lot plan was drawn, is this the one here nineteen seventy-two, is that when these lots were created in the idea?
It would have had to have been prior to the adopt of amendment to the zoning bylaw, you mean the lot subdividing the adjacent lots?
Uh, yeah, just this lot plan here, like defining the lot, this one has a date on it of nineteen seventy-two, but.
There's one, there's actually a plan of this proposed lot with the hundred and twenty-five feet that was done in nineteen fifty-five.
Oh, wow, I can see that one, okay. Okay, any questions from uh from the board so far?
So I'm confused what happened to the empty lot next to it.
I'm sorry?
So what happened to the empty lot next to it?
It was an empty lot, it's a house lot.
There, there's a house on that property.
Okay.
The lot to the right of this property.
So when they got split, there's a house on it, so this one's just by itself.
Yes.
Yeah, when she owned it, it was owned as two separate lots, and when the lender took the mortgage, he only took the mortgage on one, should've taken on two, he didn't. So when they foreclosed, all they could foreclose on was the lot that they had the mortgage on, which was the house lot. And it left the vacant lot that should have been included in the mortgage, but wasn't. And again, as I said earlier, and we do a lot of residential lending. Uh typically, you don't check zoning on a single family house, you figure it's up and it's there, and I, I'm guessing, now I don't know this, I didn't do the mortgage, but I'm guessing that when the lender's lawyer looked at the deed and saw essentially parcel one and parcel two, and was told that he had a mortgage on the house. He took parcel one and left parcel two alone, not realizing that those lots had merged, and then creating essentially an illegal housing foreclosed.
Just to correct myself too, that nineteen seventy-two plan does show that, and you can see the four lots next to it, it shows the four hundred and six remaining feet of frontage for the next four houses.
Yeah. Thank you. Any further questions at this time?
No, none here.
Any uh abutters, any other local officials, town, any boards? Kurt, come on up.
Meskis, Building Commissioner, Zoning Enforcement Officer. If we only had zoning police at the registry of deeds, my wife would be.
Yeah, I agree.
So. We have an orphaned lot. As shown on the locus, the lot, the vacant lot in the blue, thirty-six C five, the subject lot of this discussion. The house on thirty-six C six is the house that was previously owned by the applicant to this. And as the attorney described, um she did own both parcels, um only you know, the recording happened that the mortgage did not include both parcels, and when the property was foreclosed on, which I will show you the lineage of the property in a minute. Now we had an infected lot. At the moment that that lot, that house lot was sold off singly, or taken singly. That lot too was in violation of zoning, however, the ten year statute of limitations prevents me from persecuting that violation. So, the pictures, yes, there's a fire hydrant there, there's a little bit of space that appears that they can get a driveway in, there's a drainage ditch to the right there. They're gonna have to deal, if, if relief is granted, they're gonna have to deal with the conservation issues, the weather issues, all of that stuff. Um, next page, ninety-six Old Worcester Road is the house that was attached to this lot. It's a small ranch, there's a few more small ranches down the street to the right, there's another ranch above. And then one oh five Old Worcester Road is a very big lot with the house waiting in the back across the street. Go to the next page, I'll try and show the lineage here. In nineteen sixty-one, the Butlers purchased the house lot, thirty-six, so let's say lot six is the house lot. Okay, from uh the Tremleys. And then uh in December of two thousand, or December fourteen of seventy-two, Butler purchases lot five, the subject lot of this inquiry um from the Brownings. In October twenty-three of two thousand and three, Mister Butler inquired of me is, if this was a separate buildable lot. I wrote an official letter to him saying, no, it was a merged lot under the merger doctrine, and it should stay with it and consistently over the years, I have been asked if this is a buildable lot, and I have said, no, because it was merged. And most people took it and said, okay, nobody's appealed it, nobody asked for a proof of determination. July eleventh at twelve, twenty-twelve, current is, I'm sorry.
Avidian.
Avidian, thank you, I'll try, I may get it twice.
That's okay, honey.
Avidian, uh purchased both lots and the house from Butler. Um in nineteen, there was a foreclosure action by the bank against Mr. Avidian, against the house and the lot that the house sits on. Okay, that was further uh moved to the Secretary of Housing, same thing, the house and the house lot only. So on February seventh, when that happened in twenty-twenty, this became an infected lot and an orphaned lot. Okay, and then subsequent to that, the house lot and the lot, the house was bought by someone else from the bank. Mr. Avidian still has title to lot five, but it is now, can the zoning board of appeals grant a variance? I'm not a lawyer. I don't, I don't see a reason why, I don't know what, you know, we have a number of lots in towns, in town that don't have the appropriate frontage, or don't have the appropriate area, and are vacant, and are not protected lots, which the attorney speaks of. Protected lot not held in common ownership, and that's the rub here, those two lots were held in common ownership, and they merged. I guess that people could come in, now this is not a precedent-setting board, but it just raises the question, what is the hardship? That there were no zoning police at the registry of deeds, that the, the foreclosing agency didn't know what they were doing, and should've taken both?
And I don't disagree with what the building inspector said, and, you know, we, we concede it emerged, there's no question, in my mind, there was a merger. But as I, you know, the building inspector mentions, that there are many other pre-existing non-conforming lots. They may or may not be entitled to protection under chapter forty-eight, section six, paragraph one or paragraph four. But that's not our situation here, what we're looking for is, is not protection, but rather a variance for a lot that's otherwise valueless, and that's the hardship, because otherwise, you can't do anything with this lot. And the thing is, you know, arguably, if every lot around it greatly exceeded the frontage or slightly exceeded the frontage, or uh had more than enough square footage, and this was trying to be inconsistent with the surrounding neighborhood, you might say it would be detrimental. But it's not, it, it has more frontage than most of the contiguous, all the contiguous lots, and it has adequate square footage. So the only thing it's lacking is fifty feet of frontage, and that's the difference between being able to sell it and build on it and build on it in conformity with the rest of the lots, and that's what I think the hardship is, and that's what the Board of Appeals has to determine, is it or isn't it a hardship? Because otherwise, there's nothing you can do with this, and that's the hardship. You know, you think in terms of shape and topography and soil conditions or variety, but there's, there's abundance of case law on what creates a hardship, and, and you know, I think here, she has a hardship, there's nothing you can do with this lot.
Yep, I, I don't disagree with what you're saying, but Mister Meskis brings up a, a valid point and I know.
I understand that, I.
So it's, you know. Anything could end up being.
And I'm glad the attorney's here and is, 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 we're on the same page, we, we understand the issue.
Yeah.
And if this board is disposed to grant a variance, he's right, I mean, I provided you the information, right? The lots are consistent size, you know, th- they're not asking to build a starter mansion, you know, that's gonna be bigger and better than anything else in the neighborhood, they're not, they're gonna meet the setbacks, they're gonna have to comply with conservation. I just don't have the power to do it, and I don't know, you know, and I just want you to make an informed decision.
No, on the record, I would commend the building inspector for putting the effort into it that he did, and you know, this, this, it's a very helpful information, and I think he and I, I think it's consistent in reporting the facts, but it's up to you to decide whether those facts apply to the standard of having to grant a variance, but, you know, I, I applaud the building inspector taking the time to do this, and especially for making the plan and outlining it and giving you the same his- you know, the history that I also, that's consistent, consistent with the history that I provided.
Yeah, I, we certainly appreciate his efforts as well, at every one of these meetings, so. Alright, any thoughts?
Well, I think we'll make a motion to close the public and then have a conversation.
Make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to close.
Well, we'll make one more call, I know I called it again, but I'll just generally call, any other thoughts, comments, questions?
I'll, I'll check in case there's somebody else.
Alright, alright, any second?
Second.
Alright, all in favor of closing the public portion?
Aye.
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 Aye, alright.
So, I, I, I hear what they're saying with the hardships, and comparing it to the other lots. Yes, it seems certainly so, but the other lots are there, they're pre-existing. So, they're outside of the zoning because they were pre-existing ten years before. If this was a residential property, it would be a hundred and fifty foot frontage, but it's agriculture, so it's a hundred and seventy-five.
Yeah, yeah, and we have those similar issues across town with.
Yeah.
Zoning layers, um and, you know, I, I'm in agreement, this, the lots essentially the same as the other group around it, that all have houses on it, and it does, doesn't do the town or felt one really good for it to be left vacant. So.
I mean, I'm not sure.
So what, what, what do we, yeah, what's the?
We're not, but we're not set it, like, we didn't, the, the zoning was changed, and it doesn't meet the new requirements.
Right.
So basically, we're saying So basically, we're saying, we're just going to overrule the zoning?
I mean, that's, that's what we're here for.
That's what we're here for.
When there's a, when there's a, a provable hardship, that, and it's not detrimental, right, is to.
Right.
On a case-by-case basis, this can be exempted from specific zoning processes.
But you, were you doing that typically with stuff that's already there, that's kind of dealing with what they're, what they were given?
Yeah.
And the zoning changed after they did what they were doing, and we have to fit in it. You know, I don't, I don't love it, but. I could be persuaded either way, maybe?
I'm, I'm, I'm on the fence. It's, it seems like, yeah. The, the zoning bylaws for that have, were made for a specific reason, new construction going forward.
Yeah.
Anything that's built on that property at this point is new construction. Yes, it doesn't conform to the other lots, but the other lots were built before the zoning.
Well, all the lots were drawn at the same time, well before there was any zoning rules at all, so.
Yeah. Yeah, so. So then it comes down to the fact that this was a merged lot, and then through the magic of the foreclosure, became two lots.
Yeah, so.
So, so due to powers outside of the individual owner of the lot involved, like it was a, it was a screw-up in paperwork, essentially. Am I wrong in saying that? And I think that would be the listable hardship. Like, it's not someone's lack of, the owner's lack of due diligence, it's that there was an issue, clerical issue. Now, has this piece of property become unavailable, un-conform?
Orphaned. Also, bear in mind, if it was done correctly, she would not own the lot.
She would not own the lot.
Mr. Meskis, can, can you clarify for me? If the common ownership was maintained, would you then be able to split the lots?
No. It's like monopoly, clerical error in your favor.
Are there any, uh, like improvements or build-outs on that lot in question from the adjacent lot? I mean, I imagine if, generally if people own two lots next to each other, sometimes they clear land, they put a little shed, maybe they do.
There's a little bit of lawn area.
Okay.
That's about it.
I think if there were any structure on it, we might be looking for forty-eight six, paragraph one. But I don't think we have, I don't think we have that.
Okay. Well, we have a couple options. We can vote on it, using the information we have now, or we can continue it, and we can, some of us, you can drive by, take a look at it for yourself, see what it looks like in person, if that helps you come to a decision, if you think that'll help you come to a decision.
Yeah, I don't think that seeing it for me would make a difference. It's more of the, the history and where it's at, and it's new construction.
It, yeah, it comes down that if, if the, the lot would not have ever been buildable were it not for J. P. Morgan, whoever had foreclosed on the house, not, not at putting it in the foreclosure. So all of a sudden, it became its own lot, and so it's kind of, it's a loophole. And I don't, is that something that we're, we would support?
I mean, how many other abandoned or unbuiltable lots do we have that are in the same boat?
Curtis says he's got a couple. He's, he mentioned that there were a couple that the met, asked about building on them, and he said no, and it's, and that's where it ended, because of the bylaws.
Yeah, again, though, we want to focus on the specific site, right? And the facts of this specific site, because that's, that's why we're here, right? We're here to, to look at specific issues.
Right, to specific hardship to this.
To this lot.
To this lot.
And I think this is a unique situation.
It wasn't done on purpose, I promise. It's just, I'm hoping you can give it value now. I didn't mean for this to happen.
You can also continue the hearing if you want to, you know, just go, go home and, like, have your own.
Yeah.
No, no communication between you, mull on it. The, the attorney here could provide you with some additional information that might show that there's a hardship, or some, I'm sure if there was case law that he knew of that would help you make this decision, he would have brought it out. You know, I can tell you what I know about the merger doctrine, which I told you, and that attorney here is, you know, we're in agreement on it. And yes, if it did have a structure on it, then I would have said, well, we could do a special permit to change, alter, extend. Or if it was a lot that had two homes on it, which we've had a couple of in town, there is a method, even though that those are, um, they wouldn't be conforming lots, you can divide those two houses into separate lots. But if this is that.
Right, this is a, the, the.
Very special.
The very edge, edge corner case, then, yeah. So can I, I, I kind of go back to that. The purpose of the zoning board is to make these judgment decisions, one way or the other, right? Uh, for unique situations where we haven't built out procedures and/or permits or bylaws to handle every unique one-in-a-million case that may come down, so.
So what would we be granting? Exactly, we're not granting the house.
Fifty feet of relief.
Yeah.
From, from, from the frontage required.
Yeah.
And we need a majority vote, or is it unanimous?
In, in this case, it would have to be all of us. There's only four of us here.
Mary, can you clarify? Do you know? Is that all four of us?
So it'd have to be majority.
Not unanimous.
Uh, unanimous, yeah, sorry.
So if we, if we were to push it out, if the other members were able to watch the recording.
Right, you may have more folks to vote.
Yeah, that would be nice to get.
I mean, yeah, I mean, we could continue to, and I would give, obviously, the, uh, the chair can, uh.
I mean, I'm not sure.
A chance to weigh in, but.
I'm not sure if we vote now that it, that it passes.
Yeah, there's, there's the rub. So why don't we, why don't we think about that, then?
Yeah, I mean, again, it's, I don't want to only continue it for that reason, but if we think continuance will provide some additional information or thoughts. Um, again, or if you just, if we want to have the, uh, the chair have an opportunity to weigh in.
Right, as it stands now, if it gets voted down, then there's nothing that can, that's it, that's the end of it.
Yeah.
If we push it to the next one, we get the input from the other members.
Yep.
Then there's the potential that it can go through. So I think, I think pushing it and getting more input, having them watch and get up to speed, because Frank has a lot more experience with this, and I'm sure he would, he'd share his insight.
Okay.
If he wasn't sick.
I'm on board with that. Do you want to make a motion?
Uh, so, Mary, so do we make a motion for continuance?
Yep, continue the hearing.
Yeah.
But when do we have to make a decision by?
When did it cut, that's what I wanted to know, when it came in?
Well, you can make the motion, we can discuss it before we vote on it as well.
All right, well.
If we don't want to.
Okay. So we have. So we have next month, so I make a motion for continuance.
Second.
Okay. Motion on the floor, any discussion?
I, I agree with the idea of getting Frank's thoughts. I don't know how much new information outside of, like, his opinions around this are going to bring to, to the table, but I, I'm in favor of pushing it.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. We will, motion carries to continue the meeting, and. Okay.
So I can tell you that I'm working on a denial that's going to come before you for some, for two projects.
Okay.
One, one, I was waiting for some additional information on a, a project on Route twenty, that we need for some signage, and, uh, some parking. And another one is a knockdown, replace the house special permit that just came in today.
Okay.
So there will be business, um, that we can, you know, once the applicants bring their stuff back, then I'll be able to have a date.
They sending those up this week?
Maybe.
We, we're usually, uh, second and fourth, is that what we're usually shooting for?
No, it's usually whenever I get the application, because it's not standard.
Oh, okay.
So.
Do you want to go?
So we have three weeks?
Twenty-eighth of the selection, so we can't have it done. Um, but depending on when these applications come in, I still have to meet the fourteen-day requirement, so it might not even be until June. So you guys are going to have to, you might even want to just meet if I don't have them for this one.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to meet once for this again in May. That way, if we need to, for whatever reason, we would have time to push it one more time.
All right, so I just have to see if the room's available. We have May seventh, which is next Tuesday?
That's.
Or May twenty-first.
I'm good on the twenty-first, how are you guys?
Uh, I give it the twenty-first this time.
Yeah, that works fine.
And then that, that way I can send the meeting to the other members that are here, so if they can review it. They have to sign an acknowledgement that they watched it.
Okay.
We should be good. All right, if I can't get this room, I'll let you know what will.
Perfect, all right, continue until May twenty-first.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
The meeting? Oh, we have to accept the meeting minutes.
Yep.
Can we accept the meeting minutes?
Hey, hang on, let's see.
How many signatures do you need in the meeting minutes?
All right, we'll just go to the next agenda item here. Oh, yeah, review and approve minutes. Do we have a copy? Does everybody had a chance, uh, review them? How long ago was this one? January, so long time.
Yeah. We had a little bit of a break there.
Sure did. So you'll just need. Yeah, because you'll need Frank to sign, he was the only other one there. Okay, uh, any other business?
No.
Motion to adjourn?
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Don't anybody else get sick.